With the flag.
Thank you, and obviously you are aware that this is reporting. And we have a lot of items, but they should be relatively quick to get through. So I think stay on point.
Any guess?
Any public, uh, there's no one that's popping in or showing up right now, so it will ding if someone shows. Um, public comment, anyone?
Uh, okay, hold on. Oh. You're doing public comment.
That's the first, that's the first item called to order in public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will go on to item two, uh, two A, we have the minutes for the January third regular meeting, we have a motion to approve.
Uh, there is a change. Connie Oyster's name is spelled wrong in the minutes. And shouldn't we reference what she spoke about and she submitted something in, in writing?
It's, it's, it's on record, I mean, that's the, the meeting was recorded, so what, she, her comments are recorded.
But don't you put that in the minutes, just that she said such and such?
It's not brief, something around. It's not legally required.
I think you have it as Oyster, not Oyster.
Okay, I'm just looking, oh, right, and so it's, uh, R O Y.
Right.
R Y, okay, so we'll make that an exception. So. Any other corrections, comments?
I don't think so.
She's not shown us being in attendance.
She's maybe wasn't here.
But she could.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can, we can add her under attendance, okay? Spelling and attendance. Make those corrections. Okay, anything else?
Yes. In the right road, so the right drive. In the same sentence.
Right, where her spelling is, okay, there would be.
Okay, other than that, oh, good.
Okay, oh, and you know what, the second, the, the next line also needs her spelling corrected. The two spots there, so. Um, okay, um. Call about to accept the minutes as corrected.
Second, well, okay, perfect.
To be the January twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty-three special meeting minutes, a motion to accept, uh, second.
I would agree with you, second, so.
Okay, can you at least motion to, um, like, accept them?
Sure.
Okay, when we vote, then you can abstain if, because you weren't there.
Right.
Um, okay, they, they were pretty short, um, so, any comments or questions? I'll call the vote, all in favor? I, and, um, this, we'll stand. Perfect, uh, we do not have any tax refunds under item three for tonight. Uh, item four, we do have. Three. Excuse me, four, uh, cemetery deeds, um, one for Quala and Eugene Co. Francesco. And you have all the, um, you took all the grave numbers, uh, and you bring, uh, row one, like row N in section C. Uh, grave number, like, one, so, do we want to do these all at once, I'll read them all and then just accept them all at, at one time?
Sure.
Um, my understanding is with these other ones that they, uh, were corrections of some sort, he did not give me full details, but these are just some corrections of grave numbers.
Where's that, what's for them?
He just gave these to me today.
Oh.
He just gave these to me today, so, um, the, this one is for Earl and Marisa Price. This is, uh, graves number three and four in lot sixty-four of section C, and these are all, um, Carrington Cemetery on Rainbow Row. Um, the next one is for Edward and Barbara Slater. This is grave number five in lot sixty-four of section C. And the last one is Robert and Eileen Menker, grave number six in lot sixty-four of section C. Um, so these are the four deeds to be approved for my signature tonight.
Motion, so, good, right.
Liz, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions, uh, with regard to the cemetery deeds? Okay, all in favor? I, perfect. Okay, we have, uh, should be in your packet appointment, uh, presenting Board of Appeals alternate Sarah Bachheimer. Yeah, uh, she was recommended, uh, from the Democratic Town Committee as a replacement. Um, may I have a motion to accept that appointment? Good, second, okay, any questions or comments, that was pretty self-explanatory in the attachment, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, of course. Um, who appoints, who chooses the member of the board to be appointed? Does the board do it themselves, I know sometimes, some boards choose their own replacements, sometimes.
I had asked him for a recommendation.
No, I understand that.
Right.
I don't know, like, planning is only, they choose their own replacement.
Right.
Does the zoning Board of Appeals do the same?
I don't believe so.
Don't say, what's question, whether, what boards do what?
Some boards, planning and zoning chooses their own replacement.
Uh-huh.
Board of Education choose their own replacement, I was just wondering what this board's statute or, or whatever. Who chose their own?
When you said Board of, uh, choose their own, I don't think that's the case, don't they choose according to party affiliation?
No, they will, well.
Well, it, it's kind of a, sort of, I don't, I don't know if I'd call it a gentleman's agreement, that is, the replacement is the same, but the board itself votes to approve that.
Of course.
Well, it's, if it's like the Board of Selectmen's responsibility or job to replace someone on that board, I'm not sure. Any ideas?
Um, not sure too.
We have the code, we serve county town code here.
I mean, it might be, it might, we.
It's in the town code.
Okay, we're very, well, okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll vote.
Can you vote?
There's no sharing, you know, like, it's like planning involving. They would choose their own.
Right.
Board of Selectmen stays out, that has nothing to do with that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this, you know, this.
Board of Ed, the same thing.
Board of Ed, same thing, and again, I'm not sure what the zoning Board of Appeals does, but. I have no problem with Sarah, I can never do it, but I just want to make sure that.
Right.
We have the authority to do it.
Here tonight, somebody done? Hmm, what happened? Very quiet in here. So serious.
Because again, if something ever happens, and it's a court issue or anything like that, that the board becomes a weird. And the board, the board we're talking about is the.
Boarding, uh, zoning Board of Appeals. Alternate, an alternate.
Membership vacancies. Ultimates, Board of Selectmen shall, promptly named three ultimates. Members of this.
It says Board of Selectmen, so that answers the question right there.
No, no more than two, which should be named, in same local party.
So that's, that's what.
They can, if there shall be a vacancy, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint an elector.
You just answered the question, so, uh, all in favor of Sarah Bachheimer as an, oh, okay, I. Um, we have a request for waiver of lodge rental fee, the request is, was in the packet.
That probably would move.
Um, may I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any comments or questions, I think the request was pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
He's using it, uh, for memorial, for his wife, so, and he was a former Selectman, as we've been attest.
I met him once.
Right, okay, uh, call to approve the waiver of the rental fee, all in favor? I, that would be unanimous, okay, fantastic. Um, next item that was in your packet is, this is an, an ongoing, uh, thing that we renew, um, from the Regional Water Authority for participation in the regional hazardous.
Find anything about that, and, and I know Brian asked for a company, didn't get back to him. Um, how much is that, and it's a three-year thing, and where is that in the budget?
This doesn't, I don't think there's a cost to this, there, it's just a, it's a.
I think that's what, sorry.
We've been doing it since nineteen ninety. And we've just bring the stuff down to, um, when people bring their hazardous stuff down to Longwood somewhere.
Cute, that was.
What's it, it's an invoicing will be based on a two-part formula. Annual operational costs are based on the number of one and two family housing units in Bethany.
Right.
Annual transportation and waste disposable costs of prorated by residence usage.
Yeah, so, and I was wondering, that is.
It's in the, it's in the Public Works budget.
Who sits, who sits on the board for this, because it's supposed to be, uh, municipal representative?
Well, it says Brian.
Brian.
He doesn't, no, he doesn't, he, uh.
Know about it?
He was copied on it, but no, he, uh.
No, it says he's, it says he's the representative.
Yeah, he's there.
He is the water company representative, but on this particular thing, doesn't know anything about.
Well, he must have at some point, how else would he been, have been?
He's there, because I'm, I'm there too. As a governor's rep.
Yes, but not for this particular thing.
Well, he voted to approve it.
For this thing?
He said we, we vote to set those rates and stuff.
He said he didn't know anything about this particular one, he followed up with this person here. We had clarification, what's the cost, and who is sitting on it, he's, he's the ref on the other stuff, and none of this particular thing.
I just guessed that he was, since he's on this, that he was.
All right, well.
I mean, we've been doing it since nineteen ninety, so clearly, um.
Yeah. So anyway, there is a cost to it, but we don't know what it is.
Would you say it's in the Public Works?
It's in the Public Works budget, um, the last invoice I saw was for over six thousand dollars. Mm-hmm, okay, I'm just not sure, uh, what timeframe that covered.
Representative on record, please be updated, please appoint a new representative and alternate.
Which means they don't have anyone on record for the town of Bethany.
Yeah, it says, just says he's the policy board.
Yeah, he's not, yeah, he's not on this thing, whatever this.
We're, we sit on the policy board and we approve all the rates.
You're saying he does that, being on the policy board?
Yeah.
Brian does.
Yeah.
But he does not sit on the hazardous waste collection center.
The who charges the.
Right, that.
When the people.
That's what we need to, right, we need somebody on that.
This is the municipal planning committee, not the regional policy.
Okay. Good.
I'll make a motion to table until we, um, we can figure out who wants to, um, who's going to be our representative.
Because we don't know what the, um, obligation is, or the responsibilities for, that we need to.
This is where your residents go down and just.
Bring pains and other hazardous materials, and things like this, yeah, they drop it off down there. It's just a matter of who the representative will be, but we need to know what are the obligations to be that person. So we'll have a representative and an alternate. So we would need two people. Yeah, so we'll have to follow up with them and get.
Yeah.
A list of, all right, so Don made a motion to table.
I agree.
All in favor? I, I, okay, so we will table item, uh, number seven. Okay, uh, Eric, I did put a little, um, blurb that you had sent, uh, me, and I did put it into the packet, uh, for people to see, so do you have anything you want to add, other than the little blurb that you had provided?
Yeah, I'll just provide a little bit more background into that. You know, we've had a mild winter, you know, oil prices are very expensive. He pumps a, uh, a good old community plan, but most people are a little bit, uh, confused about all the different possibilities, all the different dates, all the different pieces that can come out. This annual Bethany is proposing to run a education and outreach program to sort of explain to people what the, uh, uh, what all the rebates are, where all the, this, how one makes a decision, provides some information about resources that are available. This start is, uh, probably in April, it'll run up six months, um, to, to help people determine whether or not a, uh, heat pump is ready for them.
So you're basically just looking to know that you have the Selectmen's support to, to bring this educational program forward?
That's correct, uh, and there, there are a number of small pieces that may, or part of this, there is a member from MOUs, which may need review before we can.
Okay.
Uh, get some preferred vendors, um, and also with a heat spark, uh, group, and sort of that we're in, in, uh, staffel bank.
Okay, and we can also, we have the monthly bulletin, and so we're able to put in any information and that kind of thing, you know, and something on the website as well. So, okay, so I, I, do we want to vote on it, or just know that he has our?
Did you hear the NPR thing on, on the, the main one?
There are a lot.
No, they just had a spiel on it, the, the main, and talking about how ironic, because I heard that, and then I read your thing, like, five minutes later.
Well, they're, they're very hot right now in terms of, uh, desire to have them, mostly because of high prices of oil. Um, and they're also very, uh, much more efficient for cooling as well.
Certainly, yeah.
That, you know, which is outstanding, it's that, uh, we don't really know what all the rebates are just yet, because the IRA is completely.
You won't know until late, late, early fall, what rebates are going to be there, and what rebates are available, and who's with the available to.
There, there have been different dates, which have been thrown out there, you know, in the second order, third, fourth, and fourth, fourth.
Early fall.
It's better if people are, know what they're getting into before they start.
Clearly.
We know that, we know some rebates are, which are available, we don't know all of them. You know, tax credits and such.
Is there any big deep thing, program behind this?
Oh, yeah, I mean, there are certainly rebates, and there's a lot of information through, and I think as well.
And also Rewires, look at Rewire America. That's one that lists all the proposed possible rebates pending in the fall.
So again, I think, what the, the purpose is to try and educate people on what is available, and what resources are available to them as they try and make a decision on whether this is right for them.
It's just an educational informational, not telling people what to do, but letting them know what's available, that they can do.
That's correct.
Okay.
We're, you know, we're not saying, go to this vendor, you know, we will provide some vendors that we've vetted. And make, but I think whatever they want.
Okay, so I, I think we're in agreement to, to get that support, I don't think we really need to, I don't know about that, I think, I think you know, that will, will help you out there. Getting the word up, okay. Perfect, uh, item number nine is the tax abatement application by Igoe and Wendy Greger, I gave you, um, the item that was in the agenda was provided by the, um, assessor. Now, obviously, those numbers of the Board of Finance and the Assessor have recommended, um, twenty percent at three years. So that number would, obviously, that twenty percent number would be adjusted based on the grant list, um, for twenty-twenty-three, which would go into effect twenty-twenty-four with the tax bills for twenty-twenty-four. So that just gives you an idea of, of what the neighborhood would be for the tax abatement, um, if approved.
Finance was okay with it?
Finance and, and the assessor were the, were the ones that reviewed the application and with the recommendation.
Twenty percent?
They're recommending twenty percent for thirty years, because they have had other.
Um, three years, not thirty.
My apologies, thank you for the correction, sorry. Um, don't worry, the, the document says three years, not to panic, um. Yeah, so it's twenty percent at three years, and, uh, they did make the recommendation, we have the final approval on that. And then has prepared, I do have, um, the agreement all set, ready for them, uh, because it has to be signed in front of the town clerk.
Sure.
And, uh, I'm sorry, oh.
Okay, uh, I have a question, because as, as I was looking, looking at this, because Betsy, the assessor, for the record, sent us, you know, background information on Greger's, but she also sent us a copy of what appeared to be the town code. And this is, and in no way in compliance with that. And so I was wondering whether what she had sent us was up to date, because it appeared to require a, a larger investment to be eligible for this rate.
This is the main upstream credit that you get, like, why do I have to create more than?
No, they, they're building storage buildings.
That's what I thought.
Well, they're already built, because there is a section in the town code about if you're building, you have to do it within a certain number of years and whatever, but these buildings are already built.
These are their two new ones.
Right.
Not the other ones that they already have.
Right.
Credit's one.
Yeah.
But I, I thought it was odd, that's all. I just thought there might be something in our code that was different, or that what she had was out of date, but it's not like Betsy did the out of date on.
I mean, we went through it, I.
I thought, I thought we all, we did.
Yeah, I thought we all sort of.
Except that we didn't go through any of the criteria, she just said it was up to us between, to pick those, and you can actually, apparently, in the ordinance, I believe, that we can actually pick other rates and time periods as well.
Hmm.
There, it appeared to be just significantly more discretionary than what we thought.
But it was a dollar amount?
There, yes. In fact, this, because this is already, you know.
Right, right. Voting the Selectmen may enter to agreement on the policy only if the agreement will cause a business to locate in town, create a business to replace, construct, expand, or remodel existing buildings, cause a building to construct new buildings, or cause an increase in employment opportunities, or, these are all in the disjunctive, or cause a substantial investment in new equipment or other personal property, uh, subject to taxation, or preserve existing employment opportunities, so it's, it's, you can enter into it if the agreement will cause one of those six things, so they're all in the disjunctive, uh, and I, then, uh, uh, so, um, again, I assume Betsy.
That part's okay.
That, that part's fine, right, okay, then there's an application, uh, process.
Which we've all gone through, and they've vetted it, and they, they, and so now the recommendation is back.
You have a recommendation, I'm not in any way challenging that recommendation, I'm saying, we, we need to look into it, because I believe there's more. Either that, or there's some part of that, that is old and has been abandoned, that.
I think the whole book needs to be.
But it takes a part of this process.
Right.
Yeah, so. So can we, can we, um.
Or we can move it forward, or do we accept a recommendation?
Twenty percent for three years.
And I'm, I'm not authorized to enter to the agreement with that.
I will second it, you, you approved it already, you recommended.
Right, yeah, they went, it went the circle, and now it's back to us.
It is similar to what they've had in the past, and, uh, they did respond when we asked, um, in terms of, uh, retaining businesses in town, they gave us.
And the tenants, we did ask for clarification as to who the tenants were.
What was the tenants?
It is a leased facility, though, so, there's not their employees.
Yes, and it's interesting, because they're out of town, this, the town residents with out-of-town businesses that are moving their vehicles into town.
Correct, yeah.
So now the interesting thing to find out, it didn't occur to us at the time, though, is to check and see, are they going to be paying taxes here?
Yes.
If they're vehicles, yes, right, isn't it, the, the law on their vehicles?
With their house in town, they should.
Are they, by the time of the business?
I don't have.
I'm sure, right.
So I'm sure Betsy's probably on that.
Commercial vehicles are not going to be personal property instead of business.
But still always been the town, and we're just.
And so Betsy, Betsy would probably be on that, to her.
Sure.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, we, we have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor of approving the agreement with the Gregers. All right, bye, wonderful. Uh, once again, we need to table click or draw, because we do not have the, the final documents that we need from them to, to bring closure on this, so.
From their engineers.
Come, from their, yes, so, waiting, once again, we'll table that, and number eleven, actually, I do have an update on that.
What, what?
I'm sorry.
What do we, what are we missing on? Click or drag.
Everything.
They, they need to give us final documents from their engineers and stuff, which they have not given us yet, so. Um, and we keep checking with them, and they're, they're just not coming forward with it. Uh, the welcome sign, I actually had a conversation with the owners of the Shell gas station a few weeks ago, and they came by, and I handed them a copy of what the state had provided with regard to the specs for welcome signs, I said, I said, you need to understand, read this over very carefully, because you're going to be responsible for insurance and taking care of it, and that kind of thing, so, it's now sort of, the ball is in their court, so to speak, for them to review all of that and decide whether they want to still move forward with it. So that's where we are with that. Uh, Leslie, you want to do any grant, uh, updates?
Well, this, they're still considering doing it, it's.
As far as I know, they still seem to be interested, they were happy to take the packet and look through it, so I'm just waiting to see if they, once they really look it over, and then they may have a change of heart, I don't know, but I'm just waiting to hear back from them, so.
Right, what's the name of the owner?
Uh, Michael Patel. So. Well, uh, okay, Leslie, uh, info.
Very simple, why not holding patterns?
Yeah.
There's been no change.
Yeah, we still don't know on the, um, the gross of grants, whether what, how we can use our money yet?
No, no, we didn't. No, well, no, it's been.
The two, two-eyed rest thing, we can't just say it's the town hall compound.
Lou, Louis has, is checking for me, but he has not gotten an answer yet. So we are in a, like she said, we are in a holding pattern. Yep.
Same, right, simply move, just be.
Yeah. We have, we, we have turned in everything, we have turned in all documents for all grants that we are aware of, and that we are required to do, so we are now waiting for the state to come back to us.
Where are we in construction and stuff like that, with existing funding, on, on town hall and all that stuff? Where are we at?
The hall project will be done tomorrow. Um, he's got a little bit of touch-up paint left to do, and then the whole hallway upstairs downstairs is always complete.
Okay.
Uh, so other than that, we're waiting on grants.
Okay.
Then, we'll have a lot.
What's that?
Then we'll have a lot of stuff.
Then, then we're going to be real busy.
I know.
But which is not a bad thing, not a bad thing, means we finally got the money, and we can move forward with things.
Uh, as far as the process and management and all the jazz.
Well, I was not able to attend the training session that SCROG had worked out for us. Um, I had a major malfunction with the accounting software system, and I needed to attend to that with a new member on staff, so. Um, Jen and I have not had an opportunity to get together for a complete debrief, because I've, I now up to my eyeballs in budgets.
Okay.
So it is on our list, and we will get to it before the end of February.
Okay, did the audit get approved?
The audit is still pending. I, we, the.
We had to.
We have, the date we have for completion is February ten.
Which is Friday.
Which is Friday.
Which is Friday.
So I'm hoping we do not come in tomorrow to a request to extend.
Yeah.
Because he has been requesting that two days prior to the deadline.
Yeah, he's the one who gave us the February ten date, so, I'm hoping he was pretty confident with that, fingers crossed. So. But that's where we are, and, um, with the Simpson property, we are waiting on DEEP to get their seal of approval on the revised survey.
Yes.
So, once again, in the holding pattern, we do a lot of holding patterns around here. So, we, we do our best, and, um, somehow, we just have to be on hold. Uh, just as a follow-up to the public comment that was made, uh, we actually met with Frontier on Friday. I'm going to be putting a nice little blurb in the March newsletter, um, fiber optics is coming to Bethany. They plan to hopefully start mid to late March, uh, there'll be a lot of action going on at some point, we may see some of it, we may not. We may see some of it, we may not, we may not, because they're going to have to be doing some permitting, they may have to be doing some underground work, which will be done in. Off the roads, right of ways. Um they, any areas where they, this will all be in the bulletin as well, but just giving you the. Four one one now. Any areas where they have to do underground, they will be putting um some door hanger. On the residence homes, telling them what they need to do or um if they have any questions who they can contact. Um because if they have lawn sprinklers, um electrified dog fences, um there was something else too. Uh yeah, underground utilities, thank you. I knew there were at least three things um that they would need to know. So they can work accordingly. Um but their their plan is to do pretty much all of Bethany. I believe it, or at least ninety percent of it.
Town uses Frontier.
I don't, yeah.
I don't think we you could at least.
Hundred percent fiber optic by the end of June.
As long as what is mother nature cooperates and they can, you know, um. Yeah, but that is the plan right now, so I just thought I'd give an update because that was brought up during a public comment. Last month, so I thought I'd let you know that we actually met with three representatives that gave us a whole PowerPoint presentation. And and uh so yeah, we're we're going to be moving forward with that relatively in about a month or so.
I have a number of items that people have asked me about any status on that. On the agenda, so.
Well, we're under other.
Yeah. So I know there's some somebody interested in Green Haven coming before P and say, do we have a name on that?
I do know, I do know.
Haven't heard, you guys heard about that?
I heard that somebody's looking into property as far as the name.
I don't know if it's a developer with the bank or someone separate. We have not heard anything official. I have no idea.
I think they're going to be meeting with them soon.
I think there'll be discussion, probably one of the main things, because I know that this had come up about permitting.
Because remember we were at that meeting last week and uh. Uh planner mentioned it, he said people come down to talk to him about always just talking to his hat specifically.
I, you know, I don't know. I have not given, I have not have not been given any specifics yet, so I don't know.
Also, people were asking about gun range.
I just heard there there was something that was just posted out on the bulletin board the other day. Apparently they're having. Some kind of meeting with their planning and zoning, some company.
Well, it's it's first off, on record, that would be fantastic. Actually, it's. Coming up the hill out of Prospect on the right hand side where they wanted to put that big. Windmill some years back.
How far, is it up on sixty nine?
So this is behind on sixty nine, you know, we're um just at the Hill Crest in Prospect.
Were regions sixteen used to have their offices?
No, 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 wait.
Before that?
No, this side, this side.
This, yeah.
Coming coming south on sixty nine.
Oh, coming south.
Up the hill.
Before Bethany, before Bethany Mount in Prospect.
In Prospect.
Okay, so it's not that close to the line. Okay. But I think because we're a neighboring town, they sent notifications that, yeah. Yeah, so that that's on there, but they did send a notice that it was going to be on their planning and zoning. After conversation.
And I know that um the EPA assessment grant wasn't signed off by you guys on advice of council. And I appreciate that, but I do think there is a need still to know the status of certain properties in town. Okay, so like the gun range that's right near me, it used to be formal gun range. Oh yeah, by Old Corporation, who's got the deepest pockets in the world, we ought to know what's going on there and other things. And it it it's right in a button, conservation property and all that other stuff, so not so nice. Um what can we do to to get that verified? I I guess maybe I could make the motion and say, why don't we um request from the owners on record of status and what environmental. Condition the property is where they are and remediation.
Then when when. When I first started, did we have something, they they were doing some remediation?
Yes.
Of that property?
They have monitoring wells in there, but but. You know, I could throw them in my backyard too and they'll sit there forever.
Like I thought they I thought they were doing some kind of remediation on the property for part of the driveway or something.
Yes, they were.
That was. When I first started, I think.
So the the major sites, I don't have a copy of that report, uh you probably saw it there. So there was that and of course there's the one across from Lata Creek, which is. That corporation's changed hands a thousand times.
Was he in the Royal or?
Yes. Yeah, it's not called that anymore though. Kimchura, maybe, yeah. It it's probably mostly clean, that one, I'm gonna guess. Because it's so visible and it was uh a green greenhouse with chemicals that they were using for.
Indoor and outdoor.
Yeah, because they had greenhouses on the property.
The pesticides are worse, you know, for apples. No, a lot of that stuff is very nasty, can't get rid of it. Uh Yale, actually, the property back there, nobody even talks about them. You have to find out what they're doing.
Because they have the, that's, I don't think they're, they have the animals there anymore.
No, they haven't done in years, but but they did their fun experiments there uh years ago.
Okay, I thought they just get the animals there.
I don't know what they did there. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I checked with Betsy on on, you know.
We ought to be on top of, find out what the status is of these significant properties.
Current owners.
And um you know, the one across from Lata Creek is a prime commercial real estate, if there ever was. It's flat, it's just sitting there, you know, Lata Creek currently doesn't want it. Yeah, that's what I've heard.
Current owners.
Okay, just to know. Probably can't be residential, but you know. Okay, uncomfortable. Uh Capasso, I know there's a lot still going on, are. Are are we giving them uh what what can we do in this town? We're trying to get. Someone to be in compliance, just send.
Zoning. We we can't make any of those calls here.
Right.
I understand that.
That's 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 being dealt with uh by the by the the fire. Being dealt with it by the fire marshal and by the planning and zoning commission and by the wetlands commission.
Right. But I I'm asking what are um what kind of authority do we have other than just sending? Compliance letters, we can go further than that.
Well, I mean, we've issued him some cease and desist.
Right.
Letters.
Right, so the the everything is driven by how much money do you want to spend? Uh because enforcement costs money, you can you can go to court and get a judicial order. Uh but uh and you could spend. Seventy five, two hundred thousand dollars uh in enforcement. So a- again, it's it's driven by how much the town wants to spend. The what we're doing right now is the fire marshal has determined that there's uh. There there's product on the site that needs to be relocated because it poses a public. Uh danger to public health, setting welfare because of the danger of recombustion. Uh so uh product is being relocated. Uh and the uh wetlands commission and the zoning commission is working with the property owner. For the submission of a site plan uh to address site issues.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I I just was wondering what the process is. Of course, we try to work with the with the owner, we don't really want to.
And I think that's what they're doing right now, because uh because he is shifting some of that materials and the where it's going has gotten a permit to accept those.
Right, but what but what was there, they're trying to be very careful uh to make sure that the. Material is environmentally clean, uh so that issues are not spread throughout the town.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yep, um and same sort of thing um was Harkness and I I don't know if that's appeared on any. Heard they had a fire. Harkness.
Yes.
And is is Harkness still our tree ward?
No.
Can you tell me about that? Because didn't we have vote to approve them here, so?
He resigned.
Okay.
We have a reservation letter from.
When did that happen?
Last, on Monday, no, Monday.
Not yesterday, last week.
Last week, last month, yeah, I like my roots have gone into a.
He resigned.
He resigned.
Okay. That'd be a good thing. Do we know, um do we have any recommendations for replacement?
Right now, Don, Don, honey. Yeah.
Yeah, we might want to look at that, it shouldn't, and also I it's not a great idea to have. An arborist who's also be able to be doing work as well and we, I I know it. You want to spread the workout equally, there's a lot of lot of businesses that do. Right.
And there's not that many around, so.
No, okay.
So we're 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 having that discussion and seeking options.
Certified arborist.
Really?
Yes.
Interesting. He's a he's a jack of all trades, that man. Wow. Okay, interesting to know, okay.
Doesn't have a snorkel.
We reached out to a few arborists, a couple, we we looked into the companies in uh um. That have arborists and unfortunately, most of them share like one or two, it's not like.
Yeah.
And the ones we spoke to. It's a lot of work for nothing.
We might want to look at that, I mean, we have a lot of trees.
Can I make a suggestion there? How much does it cost to be a licensed arborist?
I don't know.
I don't know. Is it something? Is it something that we could consider for a member of our public works? As an additional certification or someone on staff?
I'm sure it's a drawn out process, I mean, it can be too drawn out, I'm sure it's not like a four year college degree.
I asked that because other communities. Their public works unions, there is a licensed arborist on staff within that union.
For all of that, we'd also have to have a commitment from them that they're not going somewhere else after, you know. They get licensed and they jump ship all of a sudden, I'd want some kind of commitment that they're.
I'll look into that tomorrow, but arborist, but then you also have to get schooling.
We pay.
To be a mature also. Yeah, so we'll look at that.
There's different coursework for the different pieces, so, yeah.
Yeah, another thing, was there any type of application for land purchase that didn't get signed that I don't know about?
Land purchased?
Yeah, purchase of property that was the the town was going to be deeded or given, but was not. Signed off on.
The only thing that was given as a gift recently was some stalls. That is given to the land trust.
Yeah, I I think this person's mixed up with the EPA grant first. I think it was a land, no, purchase. I I just have a number.
The only thing we're waiting on is the is the um Simpson property, that's the only thing we're waiting on.
Yeah, and that's gonna happen, that is gonna happen, that's just.
That everything's signed on that, we're just waiting on.
Just waiting on DEEP with the certain revised survey, so forever.
That's not, that's not.
We started that when I started.
That started, that started.
Hold prior to me starting, so.
And there was a issue with the tax office and and individuals, I don't know, and that was a legal.
On the Sim- on the Simpson one?
No, something completely different.
Oh.
I was a foreclosure, I believe, and the tax collector.
Talking about the the pending lawsuit?
Yes, is that still going on? I I just don't, totally out of loop, I don't know what the status is, except that I know there was, was an issue.
With the tax, the lawsuit with the tax collector? Yeah, that the insurance carrier is handling that one.
Okay, so is there nothing that we we are, good, it looked fine, I don't want to know about it.
Nothing for us to do.
Uh and the last is a volunteer uh farm and training facility that's off the table, right? That's not going to be happening where.
I haven't heard that it's off the table, I know they proposed proposing it and they're looking into doing it now, whether it's off the table or.
There's nothing.
They haven't come to town as far as your applications or permits or anything like that.
Okay.
Just the last I knew, they were looking for money, not from the town, from grants and from whatever.
Okay, but that would probably have to go before planning and zoning, I'm guessing.
It's been a problem in other towns uh because of the mess at least, so um a lot of liability.
Yes. There's six, there's six.
Six what?
Six arborists in our town?
Oh, where'd you find that list?
I Googled it.
Google anything.
No, there's a list, there's a list.
Thank you very much. I Googled it last week and.
There's this set of like, there's this whole list uh the state puts out. There's nine hundred, nine hundred and seven, nine hundred and seventy three in the state.
Okay, well, we don't need that many.
And there's six in your town.
Okay, all right, good to know, thank you.
I'll send you the link.
Should I uh maybe I should make a motion to to uh make an inquiry as to. The uh starting off with the Owen property. Um finding out what the status.
I'm going to talk to Betsy and ask her if we can find out the who the current owners are of some of these properties. So I I think we need to know who owns them, so I made myself.
That's a start, if you want to go back to the grant, that if you still have a copy of that. And just go for that, for the. How many? Yeah, the brownfields are listed.
It was all private property.
Some of those are private property, which.
It doesn't matter, uh they're listed with the state EPA when they're a certain level, those are bad guys. Um no, no, it's in in regular. They're they're in a trash that they have to clean up and we just want to know what where they're at, you know, what the status is.
You got your list all done?
I do, I just just the other last thing was the Dave Marion's office, you know, we were talking about, maybe goes there.
Kind of like.
I know.
Right now.
We're not, we don't know what's going on.
Oh, just to give you a heads up, actually, uh let me, talking about Dave Marion, we had a um meeting. Week or so ago, well, maybe ten days or so ago, with Leslie Zuckus. Two officers from Chupai, Dave Marion, myself, and two residents who live over on and off of Route sixty nine. About the traffic and, you know, crazy issues of driving. So. Um unbeknownst to us, but they informed us last Tuesday, they had three or four troopers. On Route sixty nine and in a matter of about five hours, from like six thirty AM to about eleven thirty AM. They gave out over sixty tickets.
Wow, not surprised.
So and then they, I guess they had so much fun on Tuesday that they decided to go back on Wednesday and continue the process. Unfortunately, I don't know what the um ticket count was on Wednesday.
How much is the ticket and does that come back to us?
No, we don't see any of them. It's the state road, those are state roads, yeah.
A lot of small towns.
So something tells me they may, although I have seen a trooper sitting at the airport for two nights. Well, no, he tonight. Yeah, so I don't know, maybe if they're having fun now, just stopping people, I don't know.
Well, just people see lights and slow down.
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
Training, whatever.
But yeah, so I just thought I'd give you that little update that they um like quite a. You know, uh successful ticket distribution last week, so. People are slowing down, hopefully, and something tells me they will do it again. So I just wanted to.
Much ruder than I ever recalled them being.
They're they're not, it's rude and reckless. So I mean, I've had people passing me on sixty nine on the yellow line with oncoming traffic, so I mean, that's, I don't know if they. What their thought process is, but. What their thought process is, but dangerous, so. But other than that, I do believe. We might have a record time here for tonight with everything that was on the agenda, so may I have a motion to adjourn? A second. I don't think we're gonna debate this, all in favor, I, it is seven fifty one, thank you everybody for. Um, your participation in the attendance at tonight's meeting and we will start with the point.
Paul, you forgot to sign one of the checks.